With liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a moment of silence for our troops who are serving overseas, those who have lost their lives in doing so, and those who continue to fight for fear. Okay, we will be starting with the special building board meeting. We have some items on the agenda. Due to the different... I know it'll be off. They can't take from that. I mean, I can't hear. Due to the fact that we had to move the building's board meeting to August 24th, there were some items that needed to be taken care of by Department of Works and Treasurer's Office. So, we are having a special, a quick special board meeting to take care of some of these issues. At the conclusion of the special board meeting, we will have a workshop. The first item on the agenda, as you all know, Matt Byrne has moved on with his family to Florida. So, although he is retired from the county and the village, he's starting a new chapter of his career in Florida. We will miss Matt. He's been deployed here in the Village of Sufferings family. We wish him well. And therefore, I, as mayor, need to fill the vacancy on Board of Trustees. And I will be filling that vacancy with Joe Meakin Corrigan. Come on, Mike, let me score in. Score. Okay, Greg Ryan here. Aye.
Aye.
Joe.
Joe Meakin Corrigan.
Do something, swear.
Do something, swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And faithfully discharge your duties of trustee.
And faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I will also be taking this opportunity. I'd like to thank Abe Markonis for serving as deputy mayor to date. However, I will be now appointing Joe Meakin Corrigan to the post of deputy mayor. The second item on the agenda, since the DPW has been short on manpower and has also had their overtime budget cut, the sweeping of the downtown area has become an issue. The mayor, the village must comply with the CSEA agreement and in doing so, we are unable to change any employee's workday schedule without the consent of an agreement between the union and the village. So, there's just been some, you know, suggestions of why don't we bring a compliment in earlier? You know, a couple of different ideas, but unfortunately, due to our contract with the union, we are unable to do any of those things. So, I was trying to come up with something because unfortunately, the downtown area, which I'm sure most of you live in the downtown area, have noticed that it really started to become an eye sore without the street sweeping. And it really was very upsetting to me. So, I spoke to Joe Hunt and I asked him if in fact, and he's probably not the cure-all, but it certainly can't hurt, it can only help, if we did something in the morning, kind of like, I hate to even use New York City as an example, but there's other municipalities that do it. Some alternate side of the street parking in the very early morning hours. So, what it would mean is on Mondays and Wednesdays, for example, the Crumbs side of the street would be shut down in the morning from...
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. And street sweeping would be done on that side, but the other side of the street would be open for parking. And then on the Tuesday, Thursday, it would be the opposite. Or whatever days the DPW deems to be the most effective to keep the downtown area a little bit cleaner. So, we have put the signs up. We are, we have started the program. I will tell you that until the local law, we have a public hearing and we have a local law on the books, the police department cannot enforce or give tickets out. We are asking residents to cooperate so that we can get some of the street sweeping done. And as I said before, I think it can only help, it can't hurt. So, the signs went up today. And it's actually a computer program. I want you all to know that you can make these signs up and then they're printed. And for whatever reason, the computer program did not pick up that maintenance was spelled incorrectly. So, the signs went up and maintenance is spelled incorrectly. But you know what? I don't think we should make it about a word being misspelled. I think we should make it about something good that you're doing in the downtown area to clean up some of it. So, I have been assured by our DPW supervisor that they will be corrected and we will get that taken care of. So, what we need to do is we need to set a public hearing for the August 24th meeting for the alternate side street sweep.
No, I was just gonna say, do you know, August 24th, August meeting or September 9th?
No.
During the summer week, we have nights starting at six o'clock. What I'm suggesting is that we send the room out at six o'clock in the morning without the alternate street parking and see how it works. I was out the other morning, not Tuesday morning, it was. And there was one car, I think, parked on a lot of, I forget. So, rather than going to this alternate side street parking, because again, I think, number one, we're doing it for three hours, which...
Two hours.
It's two hours. I don't know if you need that much time, but regardless, why can't we send the room out at six o'clock in the morning and try it for a couple of weeks?
Okay. And speaking to Joe, actually, Joe, do you want to speak on...
On behalf of that, we have been putting a sweeper out at 6:00 a.m. And from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., the tax base or the visitors prior to going to the train have been interrupting our straight run sweeping. If you were out Tuesday morning, sir, then you would have saw us wheel whacking along sidewalks and sweeping the downtown parking lots and streets. So, the volume of cars at that time are still unacceptable to sweep. 4:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. with the sweeping program, we were able to, excuse me, do the parking lots and the streets uninterrupted.
Are we responsible for doing the sidewalks? And naturally with the building's law.
Did the...
I would assume that the store owners, merchants, whoever is responsible for the sidewalk. And I thought 18 inches into the street also.
Well, it doesn't mention the street. Whoever laws requires joining property owners to maintain the sidewalks.
Maintain the sidewalks. So, when we go and go to sidewalk, we're doing their job and taking away all the jobs that we can do.
It's easier for us to kick off the curve by doing sidewalks or a sweeper, another sufficient job. Again, now moving forward, sidewalks are clean. Maybe we can push, if there's an ordinance, that the people maintain their sidewalks.
Well, the ordinance is there, isn't it? That's my understanding.
I haven't been able to find it in my book and it's just updated.
Terry, there is a law.
Yeah, no, no, the law says that. I mean, I've got to look at their exact language, but the law does put the responsibility of maintenance of the sidewalks on the joint partner.
Maybe it's not that the code of laws, not that the law serves the device of law.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't think it includes garbage removal. That's only, I think it's, we think, yes, yeah. No, no, that's what I'm talking about, like garbage and stuff on the sidewalks. I don't know that it actually, I'm just gonna look it up. I don't know if it actually includes that, but it does include obviously shelving and, you know, that kind of stuff.
And it's also with the 18 inches working for the road.
We did a tree plan, a memory tree. And we have basins, rounded trees that have grown weed. Are they responsible or are we responsible? Downtown was looking to have me, so my men went out and did what they had to do, brighten it up.
But it's gonna look like the law now, so.
Anyway, getting back to it, while we're still in that.
No pressure, Terry.
In speaking with the men who do the job and that's who I rely on for the expertise of how to get the job done in a good and efficient manner. If the DPW supervisor and Charles feel as though that this is the best way to get straight sweep and not be interrupted to be able to get the streets clean and to also make sure that the businesses in the downtown area still have ample parking locations where people do come down in the early morning hours. So, do I have a motion to step the call down? So, do I have a second?
Well, let's see what Terry has to say on the law.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
I would like to know what the law says.
Every owner, occupant, or person in charge of every building or vacant lot shall at all times keep all sidewalks and curbs adjoining said lands in good and safe repair and free from all garbage. Refuse to bring material enclosures and instructions.
So, curb, is that including the street or is that up to...
Well, I don't think the term is defined, so I don't think it would include the street, no. Well, what I'm saying is that with short manpower as it is, so the manpower we have out in the sidewalks, which should be store rooms, still get, could be used for other jobs that we don't have the time for.
But aren't you just cleaning up when you weed whack?
We started the A lot, worked our way up.
Right, but aren't you just cleaning when you weed whack, like...
Yes. Can the weed, the grass off the curb line and the trees? Yes, we did.
You're not cleaning up, like I see Kip all the time, always. Always cleaning his corners. You're not doing that. You're just cleaning up the mess that you made for weed whacking and cutting the grass and whatnot. Okay.
All right, don't you just told me that you moved the whole...
They're walking the sidewalk, they aren't headed into the street. Then we're going to the door entrance now.
So, what I'm saying is you were born with garbage off the sidewalk, not the street. The litter, whatever it may be on the sidewalk.
No. That's not the sidewalk.
That's what he said the first time.
The weed I use up and he's growing, he's...
We blew off sidewalks after we weed whacked and tree basins and the weeds that were growing out of the sidewalk because the downtown was getting corrosive. After we started cleaning the A lot, because that was getting out of hand, we can't get in there before the cars go. So, we made the best attempt to bring our town back to the prettiness that it needs to be. And in turn, if we're walking past, we're not cleaning out the door entrances, we're blowing anything that's on the curb in between the street outs or sweeping it out to fight the curb to clean it. If I misinterpreted what I said in the beginning, yes, we're walking up the sidewalks, blowing off the curb, and the grasses that we cut, around a tree basin, that...
If you're walking up the sidewalk and blowing that material, everything on the sidewalk is being blown out to the street. Let's not split hairs. Everything on that sidewalk, if you're walking up the sidewalk with a blower, everything is being blown out to the street.
Because when they do work there, they blow the sidewalks into the street and they straighten them.
Just something I don't think we need to...
To clean up...
Again, you're short, listen, DPW's saying they're short manpower and yet we take away additional.
Okay, Mr. Morris, you're telling me that they shouldn't take out the weeds and the grates and stuff around the trees?
Nobody said the weeds.
But that's what he's talking about.
No, he's not. Listen to him again. Everything on the sidewalk, he's walking down, it's being blown out.
Okay, Mr. Morris, enough. Let Mr. Hunt again, he's proud of you.
I did.
No, we just, does everybody, I asked him, I asked him...
But he just said that he walked down the sidewalk, blowing clippings and everything else out into the street.
The clippings!
You don't have that need to listen.
Excuse me, Bob, you can't just blow clippings off the sidewalk.
That's right, you can't, thank you, Joe.
You have to do the whole thing.
Exactly.
So, if there is a piece of paper sitting next to it, you're gonna...
There's a thousand pieces of paper out there.
So, you want to leave the clippings?
What I'm saying is, let the men do what the jobs are supposed to be doing and let the store owners clean their sidewalks.
So, you don't want them to clean around and bring to the trees? That's what we're talking about.
If we want to clean around the grates and trees and that's our responsibility, which I don't know that it is, but again, point, you want to clean around trees, that's great. Point being is that the store owners, the homeowners, et cetera, are responsible.
Nobody's disputing that. It's not, I don't... Nobody's disputing that.
Well, all right. Make your motion, whatever.
I make, the motion was made, do I have a second? Okay, so there won't be no public hearing? Okay. Chief Osborne, request a parking authority person.
Okay, just, there's nothing I say over here, right?
I'd like to move to the second process, would you please?
Okay, so we need a, we need a...
Okay.
Oh, well, nope, we have to go now because once we get out of the special board meeting, we have a forum.
Okay, we can tell whatever, whatever.
We have to go on motion first, I need it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I made a motion, but don't do it today.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote favor? Aye. Vote...
See, you know, you got me and Jim McGrady on something here, it's good guys.
You can have it, call us. So... All right, so we're back to... Chief Osborne's request to hire parking authority person. Chief has requested a second parking attendant, as we only have one in the downtown area now, to enforce the parking regulations and Chief Osborne has let us know that that is just not enough to cover...
Well, we have to reduce, or just, yeah, that's why it's replaced.
Right. It's just a replacement, we're not hiring a person. Nero Bacciano, Bacciano, has moved on to the DPW. So, this is the targeted position and she has asked me for an additional parking attendant. Do I have a motion? So, do I have a second?
No, we're in the B table to the next, which I'm meeting, hanging on, discussing the time.
Okay. Moving along. Terry.
Yeah, we're at the point here where the board, if it so desires, can move ahead with the New York rising. I prepared a resolution which essentially would authorize a mayor to sign whatever documents are necessary to proceed with the new projects that the board is approving upon pursuing at this time.
Do we have copies of the resolution?
Yeah, we have.
Do we have hard copies?
I don't.
Now, you said you were gonna hand them out to me.
I thought you emailed your document on that. Did you email this, did you email this one?
Email them.
There were two.
The one that you gave, oh, so you have them in your account.
Did, any, yeah, like you said, we definitely gonna be...
I did, unless he emailed it to you, I'm sorry. Because he handed it to me in the office, so I thought he was gonna have it spread.
Yeah.
Did nobody get the email? Ed, do you still have mine?
I have the email.
You do have it. Bob, did you get the email?
I haven't got it.
I think somebody still has mine, mine, over there.
What is it?
No, but I sent it over, I think that's... Not here, that, okay, wait, sorry, I lied. Here it is, here, so you guys will get it. Do you want to, do you want to show your copies? Oh, I think Terry just heard you.
What if, if, I'll pass the resolution.
Oh, wait there, hold on, maybe that, that's not the right one. No, 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 the board's not here, yeah. Okay, you know what? Let's move on to the number six, live entertainment permit for Club Soda. We're giving out the application, which the board should have as a package. This will be a teen house of rock, 26th Street Avenue. This is for a teen club going by the name of Club Soda. It will serve food and soda for high school age kids Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The intent of the club is to offer a safe on club where high school age people can go on Friday and Saturday as well as offering parties on Sundays as well as weekdays. The music is going to be appropriate for high school age children. They're expecting the procedure music as well as dance. The hope is that the customers themselves, who are in entertainment, I find in the southern area, we have many talented youth, youth people and folks who tap into that. There will be proper security and a clean state of voice. Friday and Saturday, noon to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, 10, noon to 10:00. And Monday to Thursday, noon to 12:00 p.m. Do we have... Do we have the application up? I think it's a great idea.
I love the name.
I do too, plus soda. Any comments, questions, concerns?
What, this is going business commercial. Is it that...
It's new rock.
Yeah. Because there's gonna be a band entertained, does that make it a cabaret or...
I'm not sure what you're gonna know.
That's why the special board is here, because of like...
All right, we have other establishments, just for the...
So, who's, who is the applicant?
Mike, Michael Pearl.
It says right on the back. Look on the first...
You have that?
Yes, you do, right on the back of the first page of the application.
Mine came in the state of the pack.
Okay.
State of the pack. You don't have...
I don't have it.
You don't have a state of the pack?
No, I have it.
All right, he's the one with mine.
Okay.
As I said, the intention is, the places, the places are...
The first, is this the back of this one, I don't think he's got it.
I don't have it.
Oh, you don't have a packet at all?
I think it, I don't know, I didn't have it the whole time. The, you know, the building is sprinkled, the full fire alarms, right? So, it's zone for it. Instead of having the wall with alcohol, it's, it's a kid's bar. No soda, no, I mean, no beer, no wine. The intention is to start with the southern area. The plan, the intention is to start with southern, really southern high school is what my intention is, all right? And then go from there. Hopefully, you can use the entertainment and the skills that they have around to entertain themselves, you know, the DJ and with the bands, right? You'll see different hours here because then maybe you'll get a party here and there and they just want to, you know, come back. The intention opened up, it's just Friday and Saturday night, it's mostly right now. But someone might say, hey, you know, it's in time. Sometimes these summer camps have rain dates, right? Or different groups have rain dates. So, you might, they might be able to come, hey, if we come there in the daytime because the kids have nothing to do, so they can do, you know, the daytime party, huh? So, any questions or, that's the intention.
Were you saying, have you been to high school bars, high school bands?
Correct, yes.
Oh, great, yeah.
Let them do it, even, even Mr. Simon...
You may go to the next garage band.
Even Mr. Simon just said to me over here that there's something called the School of Rock or something. And they, they actually send bands out to DPW County. So, bands, it's, it's, you know, or DJs, it's whatever it may be, huh?
I'm not comfortable that it fits well. You know, you got a bunch of restaurants selling them fairly expensive restaurants and I'm not sure that they're gonna appreciate having a horde of kids coming into the town. Like you said, you want to expand it, now we have Jersey kids, et cetera, et cetera, coming in. You know, I think, I don't have, well, the idea, I have a wrong location.
Well, that location is one of the few locations that's actually legally developed and it's actually been approved before. Well, we're gonna have a...
It's not a bar.
Correct.
It's no alcohol.
Which, no alcohol is the intention, right? The intention is no reentry. They come in because you don't want them to go hunting.
The new rock was the source of a lot of complaints for the horse.
That was a bar, he was crazy.
He was a music guy.
He was doing the other type of...
Then it's late, that was because of the hours you kept. This is part of the route too. The bewitching hour is a strange hour.
Talking about high school kids who are talking after 1:00, 2:00 on weekday.
Well, the intention is, the intention is to have...
Monday to Thursday, noon to 12:00 p.m.
Yeah, you just explained why it's so loud.
My intention is to go Friday, Saturday. The intention of parties, whether it's a birthday party on a Sunday or it's Bar Mitzvah on Sunday.
Right, but once it's rented, then it doesn't make a difference, birthday parties are not. The places like the open, it can be open and there's nothing anybody can do about it.
Well, no, no, you always have, you always have a right to pull a, to pull a music permit. And it's been done in southern. So, you always have a right to do it, okay? So, it's a simple idea. It may, it could be a bar, it's not this, huh? It's not this is a bar, huh? So, I'm trying to go to a different angle or with a different thing, okay? With a different idea, okay? Now, instead of, you talk of hordes of kids, I don't know, hordes of kids, what that means exactly, right? But I happen to think southern high school kids are good kids, huh? So, I'd like to offer something to the southern high school kids, all right? And that's my intention to go this way. And I don't know about hordes of kids, huh? It's not my day when I haven't seen that in southern, so, huh? And I'm not, and nor am I planning on going at it, huh? My plan is to have a nice, you know, club in there, offer, have chaperones, have parents who are chaperones, okay? Serve ham or the French, right, soda, candy, pretzels, right? There's gonna be a phone that a parent can call at any time. The parent can drop their kids off there if they like and then go and frequent another restaurant in southern, whichever it may be. Instead of them, the parents from southern having to drop down to the mall, they can drop them off in southern instead of going somewhere else, huh? Which a lot of them do right now, whether it's the other mall or wherever else. So, they can do it locally right here. And there's nothing wrong with taking care of your own community here, okay?
It's a clean, clean fund.
It's a clean fund, it's all, it's all...
Supervised, clean funds that are being...
That's it, there is chaperone, everybody's got, Chief of Police, I've already approached him on it, okay? I've already approached many people on it, huh? And I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good clean idea, okay? And I think, I think it's a different, I think it gives the kids something to do where everyone is always talking about, okay? And the trick is to supervise, right? So, I mean, if not, you know, I can still do it. So, you're just, you're just saying, you're just saying to the kids that you can't, you can't show your entertainment, you can't show your quality, right? All right?
Is this the public hearing? No, I just... No, I'm asking the mayor.
What are you talking about? There's no public hearings or permits.
Okay.
They're usually an applicant to a...
Yeah, but people, people get a chance to...
Well, no, no, I think it's, I think it's for the dignity, I, I don't know probably if...
This is not, it's not a public hearing, though. This is just...
Are we allowed to speak?
No, we don't do that at regular board meetings. Okay.
We don't have board participation and...
Yeah, but that's not, that's not during the parade, plus the... Mr. James, you know? Is there anyone else?
I said, I can't speak, that's all I said.
Is there anyone else in the board who has any questions for the applicant?
Has there been any type of fire inspection or safety inspection? And what does the building contain? Does it contain sprinklers, fire alarms?
As you said, this, this is one of...
Emergency egress, whatever pertains, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
No, 100% empty, okay? This is one of the few, it is sprinkled for it, okay? It is sprinkled.
As expected.
As fire alarm system, that's all, that's all that the project should be doing, okay? This is the one...
So, it's not completed?
It's not complete, so this would be contingent on being complete, of course. This would be contingent on it being completed, okay? It's just that, that came from, you know, you have to do that also, right? But you're allowed to get your music permit. You don't have to get your, you don't have to get your certificate of open for you to get your music if you don't get everything, so that way you're not waiting, so, so southern's a fast track, so we're not waiting for months and months.
So, when do you receive the certificate of open?
I'll get it this month. Because everything is in place, all those things are in place.
So, why do I have the certificate of open? Then you can apply for the, the special permit if a lot...
No, I can apply now for the special permit.
No, I'm saying that, that would be another route, we can go.
Well, I, I, it would just, it would just hold it up from opening. It would hold it into months of opening.
You said next month, you're gonna get the open, the certificate to open.
Correct.
Okay, and that's another village board meeting? This month?
Well, I would have, I would have, I would have it open, like.
I mean, I just received this too, so...
That's why, that's why I won't answer any questions, okay? It's just like any bar that's in town or anyone else who ever, has ever gotten music for, all right?
Are there concerns, Mr. Markonis, just the fire inspection?
The certificate to open.
All right, inspection and everything else.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
But what you don't understand is if he does not pass those inspections, he cannot open.
I get on that, it's not...
So, it's a moot point.
Okay.
So, he's just trying to do this...
I want it open without the proper permits, so I'll have that open, it's open without the proper permit.
You can't open that, I feel like.
So, this is just trying to save the...
Because they're trying to move everything along, so like the...
There's only one more in the month.
So I can do, right, especially since how the board meetings go and whatnot, okay? Because I don't need, to get my, to get those other permits, I don't need to come in front of the board.
Right.
Right, so this is the one that I need, that I expect to come to first, okay? Uh, and I will, I will point out that the location has had music before, okay?
And the permit was pulled.
And then it was given back.
And it was given back.
And it was given back, okay? So, right, that, okay? But I, I don't, but if you notice, if you go look at those calls, those calls will be two, three, one. I, I have no intention of being, being open that late, okay? My intention is, my, my personal intention, alright, is to be open Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays, okay? Alright, I, I, I actually stole this space away from, from, from a gang in Spring Valley that wanted to rent it, okay? I stole it away from them, alright? I went to a landlord and I grabbed it, okay? And that's a fact, okay? Because I went behind their, okay, because that's where it was going, alright? And I decided to go with this dance, alright? And I called the police chief on it too, he was well aware of it at the time, huh? Okay, because I figured I'd make it a clean place and keep Suffolk strong, huh? And it is a different idea, huh? But you know what? If, if it's too loud and people complain, you pull the permit, huh? But, but I, I, I think it's a good thing for the kids, I think it's a different idea. I think you can drop your kids off there and then go frequent Suffolk instead of going to the mall and then frequent them all, huh?
Does anybody else have any other questions, Mr. Markowitz? Okay, do I have a motion? Someone, do I have a second?
And, and the usual conditions.
Yes, right, of course.
Including noise not being.
Right.
Although beyond the property lines and it is only.
And sign.
Well, confirm if, if, if any violations or disturbances.
Just like we would with anybody.
Do I have a second?
You got a kid. I would discuss it, as a discussion, I would say, come back, have the applicant come back when he has the certificate to open.
Okay, uh, the next item is, we'll go back to Terry, who has now given you our resolution, um, for the, uh, where was I? Okay, uh, the ER Rising Project. For the water generator project. Uh, Terry sent this off to Susan Blonie and they reviewed it and they have approved the, um, permit. And Terry is the author of it, so he's very comfortable with it. And of course, they have no questions, if someone will please move.
I will sue this, and if I could do it 20 times, I'd do it 20 times.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Um, Mrs. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Markowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Hayen. And I hope that's moved this guy.
Yes.
And I just want, now you just got to get that.
The, the ER Rising Committee that spent eight long, long months working on this did a fantastic job. Outstanding, well worth the wait. Little bit long, but well worth the wait, so thank you guys.
Thank you. Good work. Okay, our next item is to approve the vehicle use policy. I know that, uh, Mr. Morris has been working on this and, uh, made a few modifications to the vehicle use policy and now is satisfied with the, uh, permit and, uh, all of the things that you want to do. But, uh, I will say that, um, I do not believe that we should hold on this tonight as, um, well, actually, I shouldn't say that. Uh, Mr. Morris, since you're the one who actually put this together, I'm going to ask you to, uh, talk about the vehicle use policy and to let us know what changes and who they'll affect and all of that, and then we can make a decision on.
Well, we had the public hearing on this and virtually it's the same policy. The only piece that Terry had some concerns about was, uh, some issues with the IRS regulations.
We didn't have a public hearing on this. There's no public hearing. No, you don't have to.
No. There was some provisions in there concerning the IRS that Terry rightfully so felt redundant and requires a change if the IRS change its regulations, so we removed it. And I approve the policy of this.
Okay, and what is that, is it changing anything from what we do now? Just sort of the.
You don't have a vehicle use policy now?
No, I'm talking about the practices that we have now.
Well, I don't know, you don't have a policy.
But it is a policy, this is a statute.
I, I don't know if I, this is our purpose of the policy.
Okay, so then, then, in that case, I would strongly suggest that we have Labor Council look this over with regards to, uh, because there are some union employees that will be affected by this. Um, we should make sure, if there is, we should make sure with him that we are not setting ourselves up for any problems.
Not a problem.
And we'll meet with him on Friday.
Friday.
That's plenty.
Correct, so would you carry it to him?
I just have a question, on the portion where you want all operators, the names, the dates, time out, mileage out, time in, mileage in, and fuel. Um, or do you want a spreadsheet, like what's your, what is your thought for process on this?
Well, the, the developed form that was controlled. Most large agencies have a vehicle. And he said the vehicle is out of the amount of time these employees are assigned to it. So at any given time, we have a written history of it and blow it up immediately.
Doesn't our insurance?
It's an SOP, uh, really, most big agencies.
I'm the fleet manager and I've never quite seen that done, not that it shouldn't be done, I'm not saying that, I just never.
Were you including spreadsheets in the state use policy?
Yeah, well, they were all, they were all. The only excluded are the, uh, employees.
In emergency. Why are the fire department not?
Well, because it's, again, it's, it's a village vehicle.
Okay, it's for emergency responders.
And, and nobody's taking that away from them. There's nothing taking that away from them. All, all they're simply saying is that they can't have kids in the car. If you have kids in the car, how do you respond to a fire? That, that's, the only issue here is the unauthorized people in vehicles.
No, because your vehicle uses restricted to travel to and from the residence and place of work.
Right.
A, a police, a fire chief cannot do that. He needs to respond from wherever he is.
With a child in the car?
You cannot expect him to go from where he is to the firehouse to get a fire chief's truck and respond to a, no, he's not going to take a child to a fire.
To a fire.
That's what I'm asking.
Of course not, but if you're, if you're.
What happens if the child is in the car and the call comes in?
Wherever the child is, he's gonna have, that person's gonna have to make arrangements for that child to go under adult supervision.
Before he responds to the call?
Of course.
Okay, so.
You can't take a child to a fire scene.
I understand that.
Okay.
Can they transport a child currently in the police, in the fire here?
But the.
Currently.
Can they transport a child or their wife? I, I, I think what, what happens.
Yes, yeah, the answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
They have to go to a family function and the chief needs to be able to respond immediately to a fire.
Well, once, once again, we'll defer to Terry, you know, but the obvious liability is huge. You go, let, let's say he's got a scandal in the car and he jumps the light, makes it close, whatever the case may be, and they're involved in an accident and the kid's hurt, the wife is hurt. Hey, you can say, well, okay, we can have them sign waivers, but you can't do that legally. Uh, you can't sign away somebody else's rights. So the village becomes on the hook for whatever, and if it becomes negligence, listen. If it becomes negligence, then he becomes a target of the suit and the village becomes a target of the suit because they're operating his vehicle. So all we're saying basically is that, yes, a vehicle is meant so that in the event of a fire, you would have to be able to respond. It's a fairly standard operating procedure.
So you want the fire chief to respond to the firehouse, pick up the chief vehicle and then.
No, 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 it's at his home.
So where.
If he's sitting at a go-kart. If he, unless he wants to be toward the fire, that, that's his business.
But that vehicle has life-saving equipment in it and radios and everything else that they need to be able to do. Maybe we should, maybe we should, um, you know, speak to the chief of the fire department about this and.
Sure.
Like, you knew that it was coming, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just quote one of this a couple days ago when I looked at it, but I would, instead of voting on this tonight, I would really like to sit down and go over and have some, because I know, you know, basically New York State is all volunteer firefighters and I've never really heard of this before. Um, you know, myself leaving the car down at the firehouse, I mean, just for example, I was coming home at 3:00 in the morning from work one night. We had a basement fire up in the mills. Because I was getting, uh, on the road, I was there in a matter of a minute and was able to make sure everybody was back in the way of the house. Uh, Jeremy can tell you too, we have a lot of equipment in these cars, so when we do arrive on the scene that we can, uh, perform first aid, you know, assisting with going in and actually pulling people out of the house, because, you know, volunteering, we're responding down to the firehouse and we're bringing the trucks, we're not in the city fire department, we're not getting paid, but we're down there all the time, we're getting out like that. You know, there is a little bit of a delay in response. So I would really like to go over.
I think that's a great idea, I guess, too.
Yeah. They've been banging around for three, four months. And they've just had to leave.
People have seen this? For three or four months?
Well, they've been banging around in, in the board.
Have you seen this for three or four months? Yep, oh, and I've not been comfortable with our, I have not, I've split back some of the things, but this, emergency responders, I, I totally.
Three months ago, we could have said this, no, well, Chief Genesis was slow.
Alright, so we'll set something up, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a request from, um, that's Beaver, uh, uh, I believe it's Ice Factory, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but three tables and six chairs, and it has been approved by the, uh, board of commissioners. Do you have a motion? Someone can try a second?
Second.
On paper, and that's opposed, so move it. Uh, Charles.
Do you have a matter on the board? Just want to pass this out, basically, the big results from the Orange Avenue sidewalk and curb project.
Oh, Virginia, neither.
That's what happened?
Yeah, Virginia, she has one her head.
Right, um, the 2005, 2016 CDPG has allocated $10,000 for the Orange Avenue Sidewalk and Curb Project. These projects will require 10% minimum match from the village. Fully execute contracts between the county and the village, as well as the funding from the county that's been in place prior to starting construction in this project. This project is being coordinated with the ER State DOT, Orange Avenue Resurfacing Project. It was completed prior to the start of DOT work. Estimated start date for the DOT project is the end of September or the start of October. The CDPG contract is projected to be available on or about September 1st, 2015. The successful contractor must secure a DOT permit and submit all required pre-construction submissions prior to start work. Based on satisfying these requirements, the schedule is extremely tight. The, uh, lowest responsible bid is from Bellevista Construction Corp. in the amount of $117,260 and is based on estimated quantities and unit costs. I am requesting, um, to issue a contract for the Orange Avenue Sidewalk and Curb Project in the amount of $117,260 from Bellevista Construction Corp. Subject to CDPG funding availability. CDPG will fund $100,000 and balance would be funded from the 2016 roadway improvement capital fund account. Bonds were authorized at the July 13, 2015 board meeting.
Okay, um, Charles, we're going to do the funding first and then we will actually sub the bid.
Okay.
Okay? Um, the resolution is resolved that the village treasurer is authorized and directed to establish capital project entitled 2016 Orange Avenue Sidewalks and Curbs in the amount of $120,000 to be funded by a $100,000 grant award of 2015, 2016 CDPG funds and is authorized and directed to transfer $20,000 from the roadway improvement capital fund account to the 2016 Orange Avenue Sidewalks and Curbs Capital Projects Fund account. No work is to begin or funds expended on this project until the necessary contracts for CDPG funding are in place and the money is available for such funding from Rockland County. Do I have a fifty resolution that we asked?
Oh, Virginia, is this the?
This is the wrong resolution.
That's the old one.
Well, I, I don't know what's going on because it's two different resolutions.
Because we changed the funding.
Okay.
Changed the funding, correct.
Yes, resolve, it's actually the same thing, but Mike changed it to.
We're pretty fine.
Well, it's the same, it's, it actually says the same thing, the serial bond proceeds amount.
Right.
So we actually resolve that the village treasurer is authorized and directed to establish a capital project entitled 2016 Orange Avenue Sidewalks and Curbs in the amount of $120,000 to be funded by a $100,000 grant award of 2015, 2016 CDPG funds and a $20,000 of serial bond proceeds. No work is to begin or funds expended on this project until the necessary contracts for CDPG funding are in place and the money is available for such funding from Rockland County. Do I have a motion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
So since I'm just, CDPG funding as one of my favorite loves, um, I have a bunch of questions. Should I just direct them with Fred and Charles? Because we have some time before the next board meeting, so that way I can be happy with, because these dates are really tight.
Participle.
Really tight and puts our applications if we don't meet these.
Well, this is, this is the reason why I bring that tonight, because normally we would meet the first week in, uh, August and we should change around a little bit.
Yeah, schedules.
So, you know, that was, that was my concern, uh, that, um, we lose some time and, yeah, the meeting with the, uh, the DOT, they do have a little bit of flexibility on, in your schedule, but very, very little. So, um, they seem like they're willing to work with us, uh, and we want to get our work done first because it's road work.
Right.
Sidewalk work.
Yeah, yeah, I still think though, Charles, if you let Joe work with her, people open there that she works with so well, I think that if we explain that the road is being done, that I think we can work.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I think we definitely absolutely need all the help we can, uh, to, to move that along on your end, absolutely.
Alright, so I'll get my detail from you and then we'll take it from there. Heard that sound? And I, and I know that you want to do it by August 24th, I, I get back.
Right, so we can, we can still, it's still contingent upon all the necessary contracts and funding.
Right, but I don't want to use the funding because we can't make a deadline because that's the.
Right, so that's why we're going to do this, correct, right, correct.
Yeah, one, there's a couple outstanding items here that are of concern in terms of schedule and, um, one of them being that the successful contractor will need to get a DOT permit.
Correct, thanks.
That, I mean, sometimes they'll work with you and they'll move it along, other times it could drag on.
But CDPG, if you give them that information and you put that documentation, they're going to agree, right? You have to.
And you know this, um, company well?
Yeah, this, this sort of windows, this is the same contractor that did the work on, um, Maplewood.
Maplewood, oh, okay.
Yeah, very good contractor, um, very easy to work with.
You always have really good.
Very accommodating.
I just didn't remember that, okay.
And they, they are based here in Suffolk.
Which is fabulous, I love that.
Alright, do I have a motion, Joe?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, Mrs. Corrigan, yes, Mr. Markowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Sir Hayen? I vote yes, it's fair. Now, the second is to accept the bid from Bellevista, um,
do we accept it now or after?
Uh, now.
With, with those various.
With the various, yeah, with the same, the same provisions. Uh, Bellevista Construction Corporation, the amount of $117,260. Bellevista Construction Corporation, the amount of $117,260. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Markonis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
And I will ask one question. Thank you.
All right, one other training item I'd like to-
You could do that at the workshop.
Well, actually, let me just, well, it's kind of, they, they, the training is old.
Oh, you need to go on, okay, I'm sorry.
So I think that, right, we need to talk about tonight, the change in the schedule kind of confused me.
Okay, well, I-
All right, I am requesting authorization for Mr. Steve Cottieris and Mr. Victor DiPatio to attend the Hudson Valley Water Works Conference. This conference will provide courses on health department upgrades, locating underground utilities and miscellaneous pipe instruction. The course will be held on August 20th, 2015 and is located in Harman, New York with a cost of $45 for each participant. This training is required by the New York State and Rockland County Health Departments as part of their continuing education and need to have a certain amount of credits over a three-year period.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Markonis?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no, no.
New host company member Sergio Fico, chief has asked me to put it on the agenda for tonight so we can put him on to work because these guys have been out of town an awful lot and probably he's exhausted by now, so we can always use good young blood. So he asked me to please put him on for tonight and has he been approved by the company?
I'll be knowing.
Okay, so pending approval, the company, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Good.
On favor?
On my opposed.
So move.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make one more comment on that application I made, please. Based on the fact that there's been things looked into my property on the side by Mr. Morris who shared with only certain people of the board that he requested and based on the fact that, that we know, continue to be here, based on the fact that comment was set against me, I'd just like to put on the record that's having a chilling effect on you, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn?
Did you do the curbs and sidewalks and curbs and curbs?
That was the- Okay, I need a motion. Do I have a second? Second, on favor?
On my opposed.